Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 27th meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. I want to warn you, just as a public announcement, should there be an emergency, your best bet is not to go out the construction door, but to go out here and either go left or go into the entrance you came. We're required to do that. The party is down at the other end, so you can turn left if you want to go to that after the meeting. Donuts will be available down there. Let's start tonight by standing and doing the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would move, we have the minutes for the November 16th, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion for their approval?
Motion.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Next item on the business, on the agenda, we're continuing the public hearing on the Anderson Center. I would move to open the continued public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good evening. We hear there's good news.
There's donuts.
Oh, there's donuts, okay.
Bring them up.
All right.
It's on? Oh, it is on.
Yeah.
No red light.
Okay.
Good evening. Brian Watts from Dasticosa here with Anderson School. As we know, we're in front of the planning board going through site plan amendment for the Dillon Wood Site and the improvements for the entrance here and always trying to be, foster a good relationship with Hyde Park Anderson and trying to keep our priorities in line. We've reduced the height of the wall, the peak height. The location remains in the same footprint, the same location, same sidewalk, gate.
Right.
With the peak column here, we've been able to reduce that to just under 13 feet. The existing stone wall is 13 feet. We lost one stepped level above this arch and lowered it slightly. We're trying to make sure, we hear the concerns of everyone on the planning board, which was that they thought the wall was just, the entrance wall here was just too high.
So, the standard wall which you had put at?
Was originally 17, just under 17 feet.
And you're bringing it down to 14?
Just under 13.
Just under 13?
Just under 13. We have 12 feet, nine and five-eighths inches. We're asking for, just to maintain the existing 13 feet. That would allow just a very slight whoopsie daisy during construction of a couple inches.
And it looks like the, my word, the column on the end, on each, yeah. Those, what's the height of those?
This is, this is the, that's the tall one.
Okay.
These remain the same.
Okay. And then if we go down the wall, as the wall goes down, what's the lowest it will be? Do you know?
Four feet, eight inches?
Okay.
That would be this area. And we still have the sign in the same location here with the 12-inch lettering, again, the other variance we're seeking, and the setback from the property line.
Good.
That remains the same. That's not changed.
Excellent. Excellent. We appreciate you looking at that and making some adjustments. And I think we do have some correspondence from the planning board that were, they were pleased with that modification. And I think that said. Any, any comments from the?
I don't.
Paul?
No.
Counselor?
Yep.
Are there any comments from the public on this? Good. If not, then I would move to close the public hearing and we will move the final resolution to the next, next meeting. And we can finalize this with a resolution.
That sounds excellent.
Good.
Move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Okay.
Just to clarify, who moved on that? Well, you seconded, right?
Yeah, seconded.
Okay, who moved?
Dave.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry it was so short.
I can't ask for more given the timing on my end, and I appreciate everyone's effort on trying to accommodate the change at the last minute here. I do recognize it was my opinion.
We look forward to that. I know it will give a new vision of that entrance and certainly accommodate the reputation of the organization there. And we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry. Next item, this would be a new public hearing on Evans on Cardinal Road, 236 Cardinal Road. I would move to open the public hearing on Evans. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I'm sorry. Say it again.
Kathleen, was the notice published?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on March 20th, 2024.
Okay. Welcome, sir.
How are you?
We're good. Tell us about your adventure.
I'm putting up a garage and I'm looking for a variance for one side because it's 25 feet, the setback, and I want to keep it more in the driveway, the garage, more aesthetically looking better. And if I, if I go 25 feet, it's going to push it more behind where my house sits. So I'd like to keep it at like 12.5, I put, instead of 25 feet. That's it.
Okay. For, to install a 12-foot, okay. Have we got this right? Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, the house looks like it has a garage already.
Underneath.
Underneath, two-story garage.
Yeah.
Okay. And the back, there's also a large shed as well. So, you're going to?
Existing.
What's that?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be right in the driveway.
So, if you look, if I'm looking at the house, looking at the entrance, the new garage is going to be to the right of where that shed is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And you're going to keep that shed?
Yeah, that'll stay there. It's been there for years.
All right. So you're looking just for like more storage for?
Yeah, yep. Yep, and it's going to be like a workshop. I'm retiring this year, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Took 40 years for me to build a little spot, you know?
Okay, I understand. Good, good.
Other questions? Other comments from the public? Come on, you're all too quiet.
I have an emailed comment.
Yes.
Would you like me to read it into the record?
I would, please.
It's from Jeffrey Semantik. Hi folks, we are the Semantik family that live at 231 Cardinal Road. We can't make the meeting on the 27th, but we have no objections to Mr. Evans wanting to build his garage in a workshop. Go for it. Thanks, Jeffrey Semantik.
Okay, good. Any other comments, questions from the board?
No.
Counselor?
I have no comments.
Okay. I would then move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I believe we have a resolution.
Yes, we do. Resolution to grant an area variance, Paul Evans and Denise Evans, 236 Cardinal Road, Hyde Park, New York, 12538, March 27th, 2024, resolution number 24-02Z. Whereas the applicants, Paul and Denise Evans, have submitted an application for an area variance to change the side yard setback to construct a detached garage at property located at 236 Cardinal Road, Hyde Park, New York, 12538, identified as tax parcel number 6265-04-567451 in the Greenbelt Zoning District. Whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled Accessory Building for Evans Residence prepared by Andrew C. Milliken, architect dated February 8th, 2024, and revised on February 27th, 2024. Whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law section 108-5.15, bulk regulations to change the minimum yard setback from 25 feet to 12.5 feet for the construction of a two-story accessory garage associated with a single-family dwelling. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with the section 267-B of the town law in Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding requested variance. Number one, the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The design for the applicant's replacement garage will enhance the aesthetic appeal of the property. The proposed project will enhance both the appearance and the value of the property. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variances. The variances are necessary because the site is already developed. The chosen location for the garage is the only spot that makes sense for the property owners. A new garage would provide a safe storage of family needs, a workshop, and a car storage. Number three, the requested variance may be considered numerically substantial. The variances will change the permitted side yard setback from 25 feet to 12.5 feet, which is a decrease of 50% for the construction of a two-story accessory garage. However, potential detriment to the neighborhood is far outweighed by the benefits of the applicant. Number four, the requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Decreasing the side yard setback requirement to allow a variance of 12.5 feet so a detached garage can be built will not have a negative impact on the physical or environmental conditions. The garage will be constructed in an area already disturbed by the existing driveway. And number five, the difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following two conditions. Number one, pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year of the date of issuance, otherwise it will be revoked. And number two, payment of all fees and escrow.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Bowen has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman McNary.
Yes. We want to know what you're going to make in this shop in the back behind the garage.
Oh, I can't tell you.
Well, good luck on your adventure. Retirement is always an adventure, and we look to a lot of good stuff coming out of there.
Great.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is Stewart, application, 46 Horseshoe Drive. I, Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on March 20th, 2024.
Good. Okay. Then I would move to open the new public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Welcome.
Hello.
You are, sir?
Sean Rodriguez.
Good. Tell us, tell us about the project.
I'm looking to put up a 12-by-10-foot shed in the backyard behind the garage, but currently there is a smaller 9-by-8-foot shed that was already there with a previous owner that's butting against the property a little bit forward, so. But it's within the limits currently for it. Seeing that this is a new shed, I don't want to remove the old shed because it currently has seasonal items and stuff like that, but I want to have this new shed that's going to be able to move some of the items in a single-car garage, such as bikes, my tools and whatnot, to have peace of mind to have more items in the garage, that we can actually use it as a garage instead of a work shed for it.
Okay.
And it's, and right now, with it being a secondary accessory one, the limitation would be 10 feet for it, so I'm looking to move it just at a 5 feet for it, so.
The?
Because everything in the backyard, it's a very, it's a much smaller yard, so every little bit counts. We have two kids, so we need a little area for.
Is one of the sheds for the kids?
No. No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Might think about that. The new shed is located behind the garage.
Then yes, that's where I'm going to want it.
And you're looking for a variance so it is closer to the side yard?
Yes.
Can you describe, I know you have woods behind you.
Yes.
What's on that side where that new shed would go?
It would be the neighbor's yard, and it is chain-link fence, and it's just more trees up on the side of her property for it as well, too. The property slopes heavily. And even on her side, it's even more side where it goes right down behind the woods right there.
Is it sloping down?
Yes. I have pictures if you'd like to see some from here, so. But it slopes heavily. The entire property, it's in tiers almost, where the back portion, right behind the house, is up higher, and then it drops down, and then it drops down again, and it just keeps going sideways forward.
So it's a sled for the winter time for the kids?
Sled and water slide, so.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Questions? The board. Cut and dry. Paul?
No.
Mr. Bowen?
Nope.
Counsel?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman?
Anything? Do we have anybody from the public who wants to comment about this adventure? No? Okay. Then I would move that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a resolution here. This would be a resolution to grant area variance for Cynthia Stewart, 46 Horseshoe Drive, Hyde Park, New York, March 27th, 2024. Resolution 24-03Z. Whereas the applicant, Sean Rodriguez, on behalf of the property owner Cynthia Stewart, has submitted an application for an area variance to change the side yard setback to construct a storage unit, the project at property located at 46 Horseshoe Drive, Hyde Park, identified as tax parcel number 133200-6064-12-852674, wherever this is, dash 0000, in the neighborhood district. And whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from the zoning law section 108-5.15, bulk regulations to change the minimum side yard setback from 10 feet to 5 feet for the construction of a 12-by-10-foot wood shed, storage shed, associated with the single-family dwelling. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the town law in Hyde Park, zoning section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. One, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The storage shed will be located behind the garage with woods surrounding the back of the property. Benefit number two, the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. There is no other alternate, alternate location for the structure on the site due to the configuration of the yard, its terrain, and the existing trees. Number three, the requested variance may be considered numerically substantial. The variance will change the permitted side yard setback from 10 feet to 5 feet, which is a decrease of 50% for the construction of the wood storage shed. The potential detriment to the neighborhood is far outweighed by the benefits to the applicant. The requested, number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The 120-foot square, square-foot storage shed will not disrupt the trees and fauna on the property, nor will it create any new water management issues. Number five, the difficulties are self-created and the applicant purchased the property as he is. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. One, pursuant to 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it will be revoked. And number two, all fees and all, payment of all fees and escrow. I have moved this. Is there a?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman McNary.
Yes. Congratulations. We look forward to the slides and the enhancing the winter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go?
The last issue on the agenda is the new application introduction. Let me see if I get this right. CNE Land Holdings, 2401Z, 2450 Rev. 9G, Hyde Park. And they are appealing a zoning administration's determination to deny an application for site plan approval for a proposed development in the Greenbelt Zoning District of the town of Hyde Park. Welcome.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Would you state your name for the, for the television?
Yes, I am Victoria Polidoro. I'm an attorney at Rodenhausen Shaw Polidoro, here on behalf of CE-CNY Land Holdings LLC, which is the applicant, also here with Kelly Leibolt. She's the applicant's agent and a planner.
Good, good. Well, today you're going to tell us a little bit about this project and give us, give us some background.
Yeah, so we'll tell you a little, because I know that we have to have a public hearing where we probably have to tell you all over again. So, we'll do a brief presentation.
The first time is always exciting.
Okay, good. So, I guess I want to start by addressing some items. As probably most of you know, I've represented the Hyde Park Planning Board for many years. My representation of the planning board is limited to escrow matters only. In the past few years, it's just escrow matters, so, you know, projects that come in and get escrow. I have worked alongside zoning administrator Moss for many, many years. Unfortunately, because I do like her, she's represented by, for legal purposes, by the town attorney and not by me. So, just want to put that out there at the beginning. When I was first approached by this project developer, CE-CNY, we immediately identified that a piece of land was located in the town of Hyde Park. So, this is the project site that you're looking at. This is 9G. And so, the issue here is that the whole access to the facility in the town of Clinton, which is this dark line, I'm reaching right over Kelly. This dark line here is the municipal boundary.
Which is, which is a creek.
Yes. Yes, it's also the creek. That's why it's funny looking. Clinton, Hyde Park. And so Hyde Park is the sole access to the property. You have to cross Hyde Park in order to get to this conference center.
Yes.
That's been the case forever. So, Hyde Park provides the sole access to this project site. We did some diligence, we looked at the project files. It was understood at the time that no approvals from Hyde Park, other than, you know, a standard floodplain permit or non-ministerial permits, nondiscretionary, would be required. I don't know if you've had a chance to see what I submitted to you, but at least four times in 19 years, the town of Hyde Park had a chance to review this access and the project, and each time determined that there was no need for land use approvals from the town of Hyde Park. Just noting that all these documents were received through FOIL requests or through the project consultant's files. Some of the consultants have been on this project and with prior property owners for many, many years. So it first started in 2005. That's when a conference center slash dude ranch was proposed in the town of Clinton. As you know, in zoning, every town gets to come up with their own definitions, and whatever they decide fits within that definition. So, definitions vary from town to town to town, and you get some colorful ones like dude ranch, some unique ones like conference center, and then, you know, sometimes just standard boring ones. But conference center dude ranch was the use at the time in 2005.
That was the classification of the, of the area at that point?
And, no, that's what, that's what the project was classified in the town of Clinton.
Okay.
In Hyde Park, it was determined at that point that no approvals were needed. So the access way was constructed from 9G to Clinton, across Hyde Park, with no need for planning board approval or zoning board approval. In 2013, there were some amendments to the site. There was a bridge on the access road, which was modified. Again, it was determined at the time that that access way did not need planning board approval or zoning board approval. More recently, in 2016 and 2017, the town did not require approval. I mean, I can read to you, I gave you a whole bunch of emails in the records, but, you know, there was some discussion in the emails. For instance, it says, did the planning board take a position on the referral from, this is from, this is an email to the chairman. Did the planning board take a position on the referral from Old Stone Farm? And the chairman responded. I also, I spoke with Chairman McCormack. It appeared that we did not have any action to take. DOT does control that entrance, and as you note, nothing is being constructed within the municipal boundary. I concluded there was no further action by, required by the planning board. If you disagree, please let me know. So, again, we're just showing a pattern that, you know, everyone thought that this access way would continue and would not need any approvals, that it was lawful. Lastly, and more recently, in February 2023, the town of Hyde Park issued a floodplain permit for the rebuilding of a bridge in a new location. And again, at that time, it was not required to go before the planning board or the zoning board for any approvals.
What did that, what did that require? Or what were we talking about in terms of the floodplain?
This is in 2023?
Yes.
This was a floodplain development permit, so there was an existing bridge that was located on the property, and it was relocated. There was a, that existing bridge was dismantled, and there was a new bridge that was constructed.
So the new bridge that was constructed in '23 is the one that's currently there?
Correct.
Okay.
On that particular site, or has it moved?
Yes, sir. On that particular, it's on the Hyde Park property?
No, no, no. Did, the old bridge?
It moved slightly. Let me just say, it was not replaced in kind. It was replaced in a new location. So the existing bridge was dismantled, and there was a new bridge.
How extensive was the new bridge?
Extensive is relative. So the new bridge was larger, wider, it had new abutments, it was new construction.
We've been there, we've looked at it.
So, at that point, who, who gave the permit for that bridge?
The zoning administrator.
Okay. From Hyde Park?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
And I think it's just important to note, I think Victoria had stated this, that not only was there the acknowledgement that there were no permits that were required in 2005, 2013, 2016, and 2023 that would necessitate a site plan review, but further, there was no objection to the use of the property as a conference center. And so in 2005, 2013, 2016, 2023, all of those four instances, when the applicant came before the town of Hyde Park requesting their review, there was no objection to the use, and there were no violations, and there were no denials that were issued. So for the past 19 years, the conference center use has continued with the town of Hyde Park's full knowledge to operate and use that existing ingress egress.
Okay.
Right. So, I guess it came as a surprise when in December 20, December 21st, and then again on February 9th, the town determined that the existing access road could not be used to provide access to the project. And essentially, the basis for this determination is that the road serves a use which would not be permitted if it were in the town of Hyde Park. So, I will note, these opinions were rendered with the advice of separate counsel. I had no involvement in the determinations, other than perhaps expressing extreme shock and awe upon receipt. So, CE-CNY, the property owner, is now appealing these determinations and requesting that you overturned, that you overturn them for several reasons. As you know, when you get to do this, and I don't know how often you have these kinds of determinations, you get to stand in the shoes of the zoning administrator and make the decision that ought to have been made. So you don't have to give her deference. You get to sit there and figure out for yourself what the decision should be. You get to sit there and figure out for yourself what the decision should be. And you also have the benefit of more information. We've provided you with a lot of exhibits and a lot of information on how the property is going to be used that Ms. Moss did not necessarily have before her when she rendered her decisions. I don't want to speak for her, but, you know, we made sure that you had all the important information. So language of zoning is very specific, and it doesn't always translate to the coming understanding of words. For example, I worked on an approval recently in the village of Rhinebeck for the Duchess County Historical Society. They moved their offices to a spot in a residential district. We got it approved under a library use. So in that community, library allowed something like the Duchess County Historical Society. Likewise, as I mentioned earlier, Clinton had this dude ranch definition, which had a meaning which was very unique to the town of Clinton.
Do they have a definition? I mean, have they written that dude ranch?
Yeah, dude ranch has now been modified to conference center. And so we have provided you with that definition, and I can read it for you. It is your job, though, as we go through this process, to carefully parse the definitions and determine the proper classification of the project. So I'll talk about the project briefly. We will do a longer presentation on the project proposal for the public hearing, but essentially, it is a program-based retreat and conference center, which will serve up to 240 guests, and there are 65 ancillary overnight guest rooms on the property, proposed.
65 sessions where there could be up to 240 guests?
There could always be up to 240 guests.
Right.
But only 65 overnight accommodations. So the idea is that there will be day programs. It's a health and wellness recreational retreat. So people can come up for day programs that won't necessarily stay overnight, or people can come up for longer programs which might warrant an overnight stay.
So roughly one-fourth of the participants at a maximum level can stay overnight?
I mean, there could be double rooms, so I don't want to be so limiting, but yeah, essentially, unless you have, what, like 3.7 people per room, everyone who comes to the facility is not able to stay overnight.
Okay.
This is a little bit different than a hotel, where the whole purpose of going to a hotel is a place to lay your head and to stay overnight. And if it has a gym, you're lucky. So the primary purpose here really is the programming and not the overnight stay.
Is this similar to Omega?
Yes, I would say the programming aspect of it would be quite similar to Omega. I think it's going to be at a different level of comfort, but yes.
The concept is similar.
The concept is very similar. And I, you know, Omega would likely fall under this conference center use in the town of Clinton as well.
Have you tracked from, say, 2005 on up? The ownership has changed a couple of times.
It has.
And the programs have changed a couple of times. Can you sort of help us understand the transitions?
Sure. So under the prior definition of conference center, the operation was limited to, you know, a traditional business professional seminar space. It also had overnight accommodations. In 2021, the town board of Clinton adopted a new local law, which broadened the definition of conference center, got rid of that old dude ranch concept, to allow more event-based programming. It added and expanded the definition of conference center. I can read it to you.
Yeah, I don't have it here.
Oh, it's in here. Well, all right, I'll find it, hold on. So it expanded the definition of conference center to include health and wellness recreational programming.
And did it, at that point, also expand the number of people that it could accommodate?
It did. Okay, so conference center in the town of Clinton is defined as "an establishment for hire as a location of events used for business or professional conferences and seminars, often with rooms for lodging, eating, and recreational facilities." Then the next part is the part that was added in 2021. Also, "an establishment with attracts, which attracts clients principally for recreational or health activities, and contains rooms for lodging and eating for its clients."
Okay.
And so the new owners are seeking to expand the existing conference center use to allow these additional types of programming activities.
Okay. Go back a minute to the owners in 2005. Who were the owners in 2005?
It was the cons.
Okay, and was that for profit at that point?
I believe so.
Not sure, okay. And then after the cons, there was a couple that bought?
It was operated as the Duchess LLC.
And was that for profit?
I assume so.
And is this current one for profit?
Yes.
So it's all for profit?
All for profit. It's America.
Okay, maybe. Okay. Go ahead.
Oops, we were talking about the conference center uses. So Clinton has this conference center concept. Interestingly, in the town of Clinton, on this particular property, a hotel would not be permitted. In Clinton, the zoning administrator reviewed the different definitions, hotel and conference center, and they reviewed this proposal, and he determined that the project was a conference center, not a hotel. This had to do with the primary purpose not being a place to lay your head, but recreational I included a copy of his decision as exhibit P. You can read it. But likewise, we believe here, using Hyde Park definitions, that this project is not a lodging facility, which is akin to Clinton's hotel, and more like a camp slash outdoor recreation facility.
So the thread of your discussion is, all of this was allowed, and the town of Hyde Park did not object to it as you move through the different stages and the definitions as they have changed, aside from the construction of the bridge and they requested a second bridge, which is a whole different issue in terms of environment. And I'm assuming if it does move forward, there will be a lot of questions in terms of how you construct those bridges on that.
So the town of Clinton Planning Board is lead agency on the seeker review for the project, and the second bridge has been designed so that the abutments go past the wetlands, so that it's outside of the wetland boundaries. So there is an ongoing environmental review. Whether or not the town planning board will be part of that review is up to you and what you ultimately decide.
Well, certainly you'd have to be prepared for a 100-year storm, which is eight inches of water, and we certainly know that that stream is a protected stream, trout stream, and there's a lot of consideration there. Not only that, but we understand that you're also looking at, in terms of the construction of the bridge, a lot of impervious coverage from the blacktop of it, and how you would handle that on the property would be something that would be-
Right, so all of those issues are being reviewed and will continue to be reviewed, but they're not necessarily relevant to your issue, which is whether or not the town gets to review them.
If it proceeds, they will be.
Of course, yeah. It's important to review those issues and make sure ultimately there's no impact on the important and sensitive environmental resources.
Okay. What else, what else do you want us to think about in terms of this decision?
Well, I want you to think about how, even though we sometimes think of a camp as involving tents, that's not necessarily so. If you look at the town's definition-
Which town?
Hyde Park.
Okay.
It says, "A facility providing access, water, sanitary, and electrical services where persons are lodged for a seasonal or temporary period of time for recreational or instructional purposes." So this is a pretty broad definition. It encompasses the primary recreational or instructional purposes of this particular program, of this facility's program. And I also want to point out that when you guys do your job and you start reviewing the zoning, you are obligated to decide any ambiguities in favor of the landowner. So because zoning takes away property rights, we all start with a lot of property rights, and zoning takes away some of them, you have to read it in favor of the landowner the less restrictive way.
In terms of- Go back to that a minute. We would have to favor the landowner over what decision?
Well-
If there was ambiguity.
If there's ambiguity. So we're talking about the definition of camp.
Okay.
I don't think it's ambiguous. I think this project fits squarely within a camp. It is recreational and instructional programming, and it includes-
Is that your representative?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's just, I didn't want to lose the direction. I think it's important for this discussion for two reasons. First is, we think it's important that the board understands that the applicant relied on the last 19 years of precedent in approaching this application before the town of Clinton and the town of Hyde Park. Again, that there were no violations issued, there was no objections to the site plan, and there was no site plan permits that were required. The second takeaway from this is, the second component to the denial had to do with whether or not the use that's permitted in the town of Clinton has a equal or similar use in the town of Hyde Park. So for example, is the conference center, by definition in the town of Clinton, also approved use in the town of Hyde Park? And of course, as Victoria had said, all municipalities have different zoning and different zoning definitions and so forth. The reason why we're speaking about lodging and camp is because the zoning administrator rendered a decision that said that based on the information that was provided to her, she determined that the use that's occurring and has occurred for the last 19 years in the town of Clinton as a conference center, the most closest use in the town of Hyde Park is lodging. And we disagree with that, and that's the reason that Victoria is going through these two different definitions. We don't agree that it's lodging. It couldn't be further than lodging. And so the closest definition in the town of Hyde Park is outdoor recreation and camp. We provided all the evidence for why we think that that's the case. Again, in addition to the fact that the zoning hasn't changed in the town of Hyde Park since 2005, nothing else as far as definitions and so forth have changed since 2005. So what has occurred now in 2024 is a new approach to the conference center use. Again, it's existed in the town of Clinton for 19 years.
Right. And so as you work through that, I do want to point out one other provision in your code, which is section 108-3.3 E3. This provision is unique to the town of Hyde Park. It allows you to modify the allowable uses or the zoning regulations on a lot when that lot is split by zoning district lines. So here, you know, this lot is split by the Clinton zoning district and the Hyde Park zoning district. And given the past 19 years and the huge investment that has been made in operating the property and purchasing the property, and the fact that denying the sole access way to the property would essentially deny the property owner of all viable use of the property, we ask you to consider modifying the regulations to allow these two accessways in the event that you do not find that it's a camp and outdoor recreation.
Okay. Is there, is there not another entrance option?
There is not.
Helicopter, but I think that would be less desirable for everyone.
There's a road to the south that enters, there is some residential, let's see.
It's a private road.
I don't know if it's private. It's not a private road. It goes to those, and that has access to your property.
It does not have access to the property. This property does not have access to that road.
Well, you're contiguous to it.
We're not, we do not adjoin that road. We do not adjoin that adjacent road. If we had another option, we would use the other option, but we don't have any, there is, we are not contiguous to that road to the south.
Okay, okay. All right.
I also want to add that the second access way is being required by the town of Clinton for emergency access purposes.
Okay. So you're going to have two, there's another question. Are both entrances, you perceive those as being the same in terms of clients coming in or service coming in?
There'd be a primary access way, which is the existing way, would be the principal and primary access.
The existing one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Will they be, you have, you talked about signage and lighting at each of those, same?
So signage is to be determined. A lot of it depends on whether there's an allowable use on the property or whether you modify the regulations to allow a use on the property.
Okay.
And lighting would be dictated by the Department of Transportation. So any lighting that the Department of Transportation would require to evidence the location of the driveway, we would, you know, we would abide by.
Okay, okay. Questions? Any, any more we need? Okay, all right. And you have given me something that certainly will help me in my sleep.
Yes.
Fine report, I appreciate it.
I actually have an updated version for the board. I'll give one to Warren. There are a few little nits that, in our rush to meet the deadline-
Is it a few pages, fewer pages?
No, it's the same pages, just a few little notes.
Okay. Yeah, so the, what we'd like to do then is set a public hearing for the month of April, and that would be April 24th. I would move that we set a public hearing for this, or the, help me pronounce that, CNE?
CECNY.
I'm sorry.
Just stall it out.
Just say the letters.
CECNY, okay. Land Holdings, for March, for April 24th. Is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anything else we need on this? Yes, sir.
My name is Warren L. Plansky. I represent the neighbors to this property.
Oh, good.
It's going to be a very contentious hearing. We just got a stack of documents from the applicant yesterday, which is about this thing.
Okay.
And we have submitted voluminous documents to TAD's office and also to the town of Clinton. I think it's going to take you a fair amount of time to digest that, because we'll supply that to you. I'm going to be away when you schedule a public hearing visiting my grandchildren in LA. I wonder if you would consider holding the public hearing in May to give us an opportunity to prepare for what I think will be quite an extensive public hearing.
I mean, obviously, the applicant would object to that. This has already caused a lot of delay in the process.
And this is the applicant's appeal?
Correct.
Well, certainly we can, I mean, one option is we'll hold a public hearing and continue the public hearing.
You can, that's one option, but you've really gotten way beyond initial appearance tonight, heard only one side of this very important issue. We are in full support of the determination made by your zoning administrator.
Have you submitted, have you been able to submit everything that you are planning to submit to?
No, no. I have submitted documentation to both channels, and I'll send that on to you with the copy to your attorney. There's a fair amount of information to go through, but we would like an opportunity to respond to Ms. Polidoro's submittal to the zoning board of appeals, which we, I think, filed last week, and we have not addressed that, so we would want an opportunity to address that prior to the hearing.
We believe that there is sufficient notice in advance of the hearing, that the applicant can prepare a written submission by the zoning board hearing, and it can be submitted in advance of the hearing.
Alternatively, the opposition can certainly present another- You know, provide another attorney at the hearing.
I changed the words.
You what?
There was a text, a few titles.
What I'd like to do is keep the public hearing, because I think you're right, there's a lot of information that we need to review. I'm not, I'm not confident that we'll be able to review everything in one meeting either. But I would encourage you, you've submitted everything to us at this point. We will do everything we can to review that material. If we have questions, certainly. You're, you're going to be, what are the dates you're going to be, your grandchildren are really looking forward to seeing you.
Last week in April.
Last week in April?
We're flying to California.
Okay, okay. Okay. Well, don't stop that.
I'm not going to stop.
Okay, that's good. That's, that's, that's important.
So I will submit everything to the board. I would expect, I've been through a lot of these before, that this will be something that will be more than one public hearing. There's going to be a lot of people attending and a lot of people speaking. So if I can't get the courtesy from the applicant, and what goes around comes around, I would- I would reserve my right to, when you continue the public hearing, which I'm sure you will, to address the board.
Okay. Very good. I give you my assurance that one of the things we do want to hear is from everybody, the applicant and the public.
You will hear from the public.
That's our responsibility. Good. Okay.
Thank you very much.
What is the date specifically of the public hearing?
It'll be April 24th.
April 24th.
Okay.
Okay. Any other? Okay. I think we are prepared to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for attending.